This until Steve came over the first meeting.
Okay, we are recording. I'd like to call this meeting October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, Village Board at six P. M. Unfortunately, our president was unable to attend this evening's meeting, so we would be looking for a motion for a chair.
I'd like to make a motion, Dan Rodden.
Second, second.
Motioned. Motion by Eckert and seconded by Schneider. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried.
All right, I'll call this meeting to order, order, the Village of Swamaco Board Meeting. It is Monday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. It is six o'clock right on the dot. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Got a motion by trustee Schneider?
Second.
Second by trustee Romus. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero, the stand for the pledge allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going tonight, I just want to extend our, our community support for everybody out in Pulaski that was affected this weekend, all of those kids, that they are in our thoughts and prayers. That is a difficult situation for any parent and child to be in, so. Presentation, humane officer, animal control discussion. Mr. Lestrade.
All right, so there was a request at the September Board Meeting. I believe trustee Eckert requested a conversation about animal control and what types of calls we should or shouldn't be responding to. So I don't have anything to present. I'll bring it back to the Village Board for discussion and maybe trustee Eckert, if you had any specific questions.
Well, I have a few, and, I mean, I, I always like to be less is more, and I know you're doing what we're telling you to do. And on some of these things, I just see, wow, I mean, like bat in garage and stuff like that, things that my husband and I would take care of ourselves, things that we all have to pay for, that maybe some people could go to private places that do this if they need animal removal or whatever, and I'm, I, I mean, baby raccoons, cranes in a fence, fox in a neighborhood, it's their neighborhood too. I, I, I don't know, I, I just think, I don't think we should be having to pay for those little things, injured rabbit, vultures need to eat too.
That, that's sad, it's hard to, it's hard to tell the person that's calling you that.
And I know it's not your fault.
Yeah.
What do we do, what can we do?
Well, I guess the first thing is, maybe Mr. Lestrade can explain what, where you're getting these calls from, how they're, how you're getting out to the site, why you're going out to the site.
Yeah, so, a majority, a majority of the, of the calls like that, they come directly from the resident. You know, they're, they see whatever, whatever this animal is out there, whether it's injured or, you know, sick or something like that. So, you know, really depending on the, on the situation, we're going out there. This last couple of months in the summer was big with raccoons, just being sick with distemper, but you want to get them out of the area because distemper is, is contagious to other domestic animals and other animals. So you want to get that, you know, out of the area. Same thing with, with the fox. I think that one was, I would agree, that one was probably blown out of proportion, just, you know, by the, the residents. Nothing wrong with the fox, that was apparent. With, you know, like, when it, when it comes to like the, the bats in the garage and stuff like that, that, that is something that we need to address right away because there is, you know, the possibility of, you know, if somebody comes in contact with it, contracting rabies, which is, is pretty serious, and we, I believe that particular, that particular bat that we removed from that garage did come back a rabbit, and there were kids, kids that were, that were near it, that's actually fine. Don't believe that they came into contact, but that's, you know, one of the things that we need to really look at the safety of people too, compared to what the call is, you know, for, for some of the calls. It, it's difficult to tell people when they call, like, you know, about a goose with a broken wing or something like that. They think that they're going to go to Wildlife Sanctuary and be, be repaired, like a new wing put on or something like that. They're basically going to have their, the same, same lifestyle there that they would leave them where they're, where they're at, you know, by a pond or something like that. So we do try to educate people on that. Sometimes we do respond to them, especially if it gets, once it gets into winter time and we're able to, able to actually contain the, the animal, because right now with the ponds being open, they go right into the, into the water, and we're not going to put a boat in the water to go, you know, pull a goose with an injured wing or something like that out of the water, so. I just, I, I find it difficult to tell, you know, people, let nature take its course. But, I mean, there are some things that, that have to, you know, that, that is just what's going to happen regardless.
I mean, is that what we want? I mean, everybody has to pay for that, and I'm, I wouldn't call you for many of those things. We would do it ourselves.
Yeah, and some people aren't comfortable doing that.
Yeah.
That's the.
There's private trappers, and, I, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I don't think, what's our, what was our spend in twenty twenty-one? Or what is our spend year-to-date? Do we have that?
I think we're tracking for around seven thousand for the year.
So, just my thoughts, we actually had, my neighbor, in fact, it was one of the first times Shane was in the area, you know, there was a, a fox that, I don't know what was wrong with that fox, but it was on their back porch. And, yeah, we could, that person could hire a trapper, or hire this, or hire that, but, you know, that individual wasn't comfortable dealing with that animal, my neighbor wasn't, and Shane came and took care of it and got it out of the area, and we don't know if that had distemper, we didn't know if it had rabies, you know, it was acting extremely weird, and I don't, I don't think residents, for the most part, should, should have to handle those situations. You know, and we say, yes, we all have to pay for it as a community, you know, about seven thousand dollars are where we're at, but what if that circumstance comes to you, or yes, you're comfortable, maybe I'm comfortable, but somebody isn't? And I think that's, as long as it doesn't get too crazy and out of hand, I don't, I don't think, I don't think at this point, we're out of hand.
There was a hungry coyote staring at us the other day, I mean, just right out there. They just, they'll go about and do their thing, you don't have to get anywhere near it, it just, some things take care of themselves, and I'm just wondering, do you guys really want to pay for this? Because if it were me, I would say no.
I'm fine with it.
All right.
I, well, I, I have a good question. So, in my younger life, when I had young kids, they would find every now and then a bird with a broken wing or something. It never occurred to us to call the village. We would, we would maybe call the Wildlife Sanctuary to see if they wanted us to bring it there. You know, I would go out there, and I understand the comfort question, right? And, you know, looking at some of these, I just wonder if, yeah, I think I counted twenty-five calls in one month, and I just wonder if there might be another path where, in some cases, like a bat, right, which could pose a potential public safety question, then you want someone who's knowledgeable about how to deal with it, et cetera. Maybe there are some animals that we treat as, in the interests of the community, and we go and address those animals that, on the village's dollar. But other animals, we, like, say, I found a sick crow. Okay, well, you can come over there, but there's going to be a fee to do it. Or, you can contact the Wildlife Sanctuary and see what they would like you to do with it. Kind of unravel or unfold that, tell me what you think of those ideas.
Yeah, it's, it's a good idea if you want to add, you know, another, another type of, of, you know, of charge for those certain, certain calls that we would come out on, that we could come out on, you know, they just have to pay the extra, extra fee like they would if they contacted a pest control company that have to pay for, for them, you know, also to, to, to come out and, and take care of the situation. You know, some of it, 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 it may be, you know, education, and I do try to educate everybody that, that I talk to, you know, about what, what they're, they're, you know, they're seeing or what, what's going on with the, with the animal. The Wildlife Sanctuary, when they call them, they're going to tell them to call me.
Oh, okay.
That's what the Wildlife Sanctuary does.
Okay.
They actually give my number out for everybody in Brown County.
So when they, when, so if the Wildlife, so I call the Wildlife Sanctuary, Wildlife Sanctuary answers me, I say, hey, I've got a, a bird with a broken wing in my backyard, what do I do? They're going to point me to the village, to you, then, would then be.
Directly to me.
Then you would charge the village for that service, not the Wildlife Sanctuary.
Correct.
Okay, I see that.
Yeah, yeah, unless, you know, unless you, you, they, they will, and I've, I've never been on a call with them, but they may ask, are you able to bring the animal in? If they're not able to, or they don't feel, you know, safe enough to approach whatever the, the animal is, then they will, they typically give out, out my number to call direct.
And you would probably have a pretty good understanding of what animals are potentially created public health hazard and which ones don't. So, would that be something you would be comfortable doing, is saying, okay, we understand that you have an injured rabbit in your backyard, we will come and take care of it for you, but there is a fee associated with that, it's a, an hour of our time, seventeen dollars, I think, is what I'm reading here, plus the miles, or just skip the miles, whatever, you know, call it a twenty-five, twenty-dollar fee across the board. Then that puts a price tag on that service, maybe, so that maybe you're, from your interests, right, of, you know, and your interests too, right? If I'm, if I'm seriously concerned that the fox on my porch is a, is a danger, because maybe it's really mangy.
But hold on, before we get to that.
Well, I would just caution, I mean, assigning a fee to it, then somebody needs to administrate that fee. So then you've got, Mary's got to process the invoice, that invoice goes out, somebody's got to track the account receivables on that. You're now adding a lot more staff time to try to recover this seventeen-dollar charge. Is that worth doing?
How much staff time?
And then you'd have, well, you could include staff time in that charge.
How much staff time would you estimate that would take?
I think Jessica would be a better answer to that, if she had to just create a random invoice.
I mean, honestly, my first thought was that, since we contract with the Village of Howard, that the Village of Howard would be doing all of the charging for anything if there were fees for providing services on any calls, so, didn't, didn't register that we might want to take a portion of this and do the billing ourselves. I, I guess I'd need to have a sense of how many calls we're talking about that you would bill out for, but as Alex mentioned, there is the sending out of the invoice, then there's the time spent collecting, we send reminder letters every month, then they get placed on the, they get placed on trip. And then at the end of the year, we get to do all the accounting to book the receivable as if we're going to collect it, and then, you know, everything that goes into accounting. So there's a little bit of extra time, not just for Mary, but, you know, for myself as well.
I mean, you, what you just kind of delineated was almost like the worst-case scenario, right? Where I don't pay my bill, or is that kind of the best-case scenario where I paid my bill, but you have to track it through accounting to the end?
To both.
Okay, that's fine. So what does the Village of Howard do? Does the Village of Howard have a fee?
No, we don't, we don't have a, a fee on top of, no.
Is there any other community in Brown County that you work with that charges a fee?
No.
Okay, so we would be, we would be the oddity.
I mean, at some point, you have to think about what level of service do we want to provide as a village and weighing the costs of that, that service. I do also want to talk a little bit about, you know, if we were to get rid of animal control altogether, I think previously, before we had animal control, what would happen is if somebody had a bird in their garage, they would be calling our officers and you'd be taking an officer off the scene, or off the roads. So having somebody kind of be that middleman for us is good for our police services. And that's something that I would not want to see us go back to, is relying on our, our Brown County Sheriff Office officers to be responding to those calls.
Are there any, are there any people that call very frequently? Or are there certain situations that may be abused?
Not that I have, not that I have noticed.
Okay.
I don't, I, I don't think I've ever had a repeat, repeat caller on.
Well, on this one, you do, unless it's the same call. You have an injured crow on eight-three, on twenty-four, twenty-two Breeze Wood, and then you have a sick crow.
That was the unable to locate.
Yeah, so probably, so there, there's probably codes next to like U T L, unable to locate.
U T C.
Or, yeah, unable to catch.
Unable to catch?
Yeah, so then they went back at a later date to, to catch it. That's probably on the cart.
All right, so that's why it's a duplicate. I do think about the services we want to provide as a village, but I also understand the other point of it. It's like, at some point in time, there has to be a point where the citizen needs to take control of the situation, right? And I agree with trustee Eckert that some of these are like a sick-crested cormorant. You know, and I understand your situation too, if I'm in your shoes, I'm responding to it, right? Like, you're educating, saying, hey, blah, blah, et cetera. So I've, I guess I've said my piece on it. Thank you for clarifying.
One more question about the, the lost dog thing. There seems to be signs that pop up right by stop signs, and they stay there forever. Are they supposed to be right by a stop sign, and should they be there for months?
I don't think that's, I don't think that's her mean officer.
That's not you?
No.
Okay.
That'd be more of a zoning question, but if the Village Board wants to take the position of having a policy on how long those should be out, we, as long as they're out of the right-of-way, it's fine by us, but.
Okay, sometime when they're by the stop signs, and, all right.
There's, there's another balance of, you know, how much do you want to enforce the code to a T versus trying to have some humanity and hoping that somebody finds that.
Okay.
I think there was a couple of years ago, one particular case where the deputies ended up taking the signs down, the ones that were in the right-of-ways because they were up so long. So I think there's that fine balance, and I think our officers do a great job of.
I mean, even if it's like a couple of weeks, a month, whatever, but I mean, when it's up a year, or, I don't know.
I think those you just bring to the Village attention, you bring those to Alex's attention, bring them to Steve's attention. Anybody else for?
Just one quick question.
Humane officer, yes.
The second page of the doc, I was just looking through the first page at all the U T Cs, and then the second page, I don't see many codes.
The second page might be Shane, your, your call log.
My call log, yeah, typically.
So are they, is the call, is the first page a result?
This one. So this is, this is Shane's portion, right?
Elaborate, what's that mean?
What's that?
So this, this first invoice here is typically your cart response team?
Yes, that's.
So that would not be Shane?
Okay.
And then the second page is Shane's actual animal control services that he's providing himself?
So it, it looks like the ones that do not have codes on it would be some that I took care of over the phone.
Oh, okay.
Like, there was a call regarding the, the missing, a missing dog in, in Swamaco, you know, and, and people looking for information on the, the T and R program with the cats, that kind of stuff. Everything else looks to have, have a, some type of a code after it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Lestrade, for coming in, and I think if there's going to be any further discussion on, on what we should do or, or parameters, maybe parameter set, that could be for future discussion. Maybe.
We've talked about it before.
Maybe Health and Safety Committee could, could take that, take that up at some point, as time allows. I think that'd be a good committee for that, you know, where do we draft? You know, where, where are the boundaries, I guess?
We can always look at, like, putting together some kind of a educational stuff to, to send out to, to the, you know, the members of the village, whether it's posted in a newsletter, if people read it or, or not. Something like that may, may help. You know, steps, you know, steps that they could, you know, that they can actually take these steps that, that we're taking of transporting.
We call it a village with rural character, which I never call it that, but then, we don't like foxes in our yard. Okay, okay.
Well, I think you're.
It just doesn't make sense to me.
I think your, your newsletter idea is very good, because when I was looking at the first page, I saw five of them were unable to locate. So I'm guessing that the problem between the phone call and the person getting there, the problem left. So a newsletter might be, hey, wait an hour.
Right.
And then call.
Very good, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Number six, public appearances. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak on any subject, not on the agenda? No, all right. Consent agenda, previous minutes of the Village Board, ten-three, twenty-twenty-two, Municipal Court, September twenty-twenty-two, report, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, poll worker updated list, September twenty-twenty-two, recreational report, September twenty-twenty-two, fire department report, and August twenty-twenty-two, animal control report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as?
One question, sorry, Dan, I know, you want to be quick?
No, no, all good.
I'm a troublemaker tonight. Are, can I ask, are all the new poll workers from Swamaco?
New ones, I believe, are all from Swamaco.
Okay, I'm good with it then.
Yeah.
Are you making a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a motion by trustee Eckert, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Ward, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Administrative items. Wa, A, U T V, A T V, or A T V, U T Vs on village roadways, possible U T V, A T V ordinance amendment, ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash seventeen, first reading, Minister Kaker.
All right, thank you. So per the adoration from the last meeting, I've put together a first reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash seventeen. What this does is two things for the A T V, U T V ordinance. It changes the permissible times from, it's currently eight A M. to ten P. M. This would change it to five A M. to eleven P. M., and it also removes the restriction from five A M. to eight A M. along the west side of Highway forty-one for anybody looking to access any part of the village. It's no longer required that you're using it only for Green Bay, or Bay of Green Bay recreational activities.
I think this simplifies it, I think it looks good.
It very much simplifies it. If there are no questions or concerns, this would go to a second reading at our next meeting, which will not take place until the twenty-first of November, and as soon as it's posted, it would be in effect.
Any discussion?
Looks good.
Nobody?
Looks good.
There you go, sir.
Thanks for coming, Casey.
Uh, we do not need to open the floor.
I don't know.
We don't have to open the floor, right? First reading?
Yeah, it's first reading.
Very good. All righty. Public works item, Brown County Solid Waste Management Services Agreement Amendment. Mister, I mean, sorry, Director Smith.
Hi, Brown County, Solid Waste has reached out to all preferred customers that have recently signed the Solid Waste Services Agreement last year. They have reached out looking for an amendment to that agreement. I have attached the letter that was sent to me from the court directors. You guys can see the background behind the initiative on the amendment. They are facing some similar challenges that we, you know, have experienced recently and over the past few years, such as significant inflation, equipment delays, new equipment that's needed for their operation. And we are proposing a few-dollar increase to the rate that was expected as part of the agreement that we have signed in December of twenty-twenty-one. I've included that for your review. So over the years, you know, Brown County Solid Waste has provided excellent service here for us. It's a guaranteed place to take our waste, and it's solid and recycling material. It's a known destination that we have a contract with Harders, and service has been provided in, in good quality. We've never had any issues. You know, we do a lot of services with Brown County, all of which are of high quality. And, you know, this would, if the extension or the amendment is, is signed, we would expect that to continue on in the future. And it does assure us that we have nine more years of a disposal location for our solid waste, which is important. The, again, the rate, gate rate is going to go up to fifty-two, twenty-five per ton compared to what we're paying now in Form seven-eight-two. I think, is that right this year?
That's what it says.
Yep. And Mark Walters has agreed to join us here tonight if you guys have any further questions, but we'd be looking to have the Village Board approve or deny signing of the Solid Waste Management Services Agreement Amendment.
Do you know how many tons we use?
I think we had about four thousand last year.
And.
I'm sorry, I missed, I'm, uh, sorry, I missed that question, what was?
Oh, it's, it's for them, how is this going to affect our proposed budget?
So we have included that rate in our.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Trustee Schneider?
How many tons do we do, are you, four thousand, you said?
Forty-one hundred is what we plan for.
Okay, and when was the last time it was increased, the rate?
Uh, well, it goes up each year.
Every year?
Yeah, and it's planned to go up two dollars per year for the next four years. I don't have the full schedule in this one, but in the original, yeah, there it is, so there's the projected four-year plan. It's going to be two bucks a year after this, after twenty-three, first time.
And if I could, is this, okay, just want to make sure, if, if you allow me to, it's complicated, and Andy knows this, because we debated or worked with the communities in Brown County for a year before we updated the contract last year and set up this schedule. And actually, the amendment is a one-page, actually, this one-page document. One of the things, as a public agency, as Brown County, we have to go through a process of notifying our customers and changing our contracts if we add a rate to our schedule. And what the amendment actually do, is doing is, so we opened up a new landfill in southern Brown County this year, and when we initially opened it, we weren't sure what the cost difference would be for hauling waste to our west side transfer station on Mason Street, or hauling it to the landfill, and whether we could provide a discount on that hauling cost. Through six months of this year, we actually figured out that, yeah, we actually can offer a fairly steep discount to anybody who hauls directly to the landfill. Costs are significantly lower for that purpose, but our contract doesn't allow for it. At this point, there is no direct haul rate. So what the amendment was to, was, sent out was to actually add a direct haul rate for any, any of our communities who are hauling directly to the south landfill. It's not in the contract as it stands, it wasn't a rate structure that we could actually charge. And it's actually, if you go back up without, the, the, before that you have up there, I actually couple up. One more, there you go. The south, south landfill solid waste customers, we're actually dropping our rate for direct haul from this year to next year by ten dollars a ton. And considering you, you folks actually use Harders, they're fairly frequent users of our south landfill. I mean, they, they're well aware of this, and they, they're already making use of that, that transport down to the south landfill. So this, this amendment specifically was to address that. The contract itself actually did have a schedule built into it, and that was what that other table was for, that laid out our expected costs over the next five years. And they were not fixed costs at that time, they were expected, because what we've done over the last decade is, as the county, we've retained funds as a rate stabilization fund on the, on behalf of the communities. So we've actually socked away basically about a million dollars into a fund that would help us stabilize our rate against anticipated increases in landfill when it opened. What we didn't anticipate was that cost of living, C P. Um, what we didn't anticipate was that cost of living, CPI, Consumer Price Index, would go up nine point, nine point two six percent from year to year. You know, it's sitting at eight and a half percent right now. It's been over eight percent since early part of this year, which is actually where, you know, expect, that's where our expected costs are coming in. And that's why our, our CPI increase is four point four, the four dollars and forty three cents. As part of that, we're actually not adding in the cost of our construction of the landfill into the charges for the communities that was built into our rate structure when we signed the contract last year. We're going to delay that as long as we can and find out what, we go through an audit in twenty three mid-year, uh, after the first full year of service. And we'll actually have a better sense of what it costs us to run a landfill. And we anticipate, based on where we are right now, that it'd actually be less than what we anticipated at the time when we were putting the contract together. So we will not, not be putting in, uh, including that cost of running a landfill or construction of landfill as part of our future rate structure. It gets, believe me, it's been, as Andy knows, being at our solid waste uh meetings and meeting with the public works directors around the county, it gets complicated to explain. But um, bottom line is, we're trying our best to make sure that our rates don't go up sharply. When you build a landfill, it costs, we, we built the land for, landfill for twenty million dollars. We're trying not to pass that cost along to the communities in one lump some year, or you know, one year. So in theory, if we hadn't put away money, we didn't have this rate stabilization fund, our tonnage rate could potentially have gone up by the cost of construction, which is estimated at eight dollars a ton. So we could have actually, we, we might have had that kind of increase, seen that kind of increase just to cover the costs of what we had to put into the landfill on a year-to-year basis, but we didn't because of the rate stabilization fund and, and now we're just dealing with CPI in terms of the increases that are out there. So um, it gets, you know, and I look at Dan because he knows my business as well as anybody out there. We've known each other for a long time and he's, he knows exactly what we're working with, uh, having worked on this for a long time. And actually, you've been in the field longer than I have. So, you know, we're doing our best to kind of to keep things even for the community. And in this case, the amendment really was to address the fact that we're adding a tier or a rate tier that wasn't in the contract. And we want to make sure that we get that rate tier in there so that we can benefit the communities as we go along. How it'll affect Swamaco, I, I don't know how much waste will actually get hauled directly down to the landfill. But considering it's Harders and they're already running back and forth down there, you may benefit from that pretty substantially over time. Any other questions I can answer, I'll be happy to. It's, it's like I say, it's a complicated process just because we're dealing with um, a lot of moving parts right now.
I'll give Harders a call too and see what the uh, you know, what, what is that ratio going to be? I don't know how much they would haul directly, um, but I can find that out. Maybe they have a sense of how many trips that is that will save and pay the forty three on versus the fifty two or the, yeah, forty three over the fifty two in a quarter.
Well, you're right, and I won't comment on rates, and I didn't mean to wear this stuff today. Uh, I've been out in the field all day, um, just actually got back from Menominee. But um, so we're looking at thirty eight thousand dollars. So I, I can comment on that and I will. So thirty eight thousand dollars in savings we'd do if they did direct haul. So two things we got to talk to Harders about is do they have the capacity, the truck capacity to be able to go off-road? I'm gonna guess that that increased time to go off-road and not sit at the transfer station in line waiting to dump may be less than what we think. Now, they may blow it out of proportion and make it seem bigger. But I bet you if you actually sat out there and timed their truck when they go off-road and when they come back, they spend a substantial time sitting in line at the transfer station. I don't know if anybody else in this room has gone to the transfer station, but there can be, you know, up to a half an hour wait just to dump. And trucks don't get preferential treatment over anybody else that's come to utilize utilize a transfer station. So you could have somebody unloading their trailer and, and some of these trucks are waiting for those guys, you know, to unload a trailer where these guys come in and out. So I, I think that's, you know, do they have the capacity to be able to go off-road that long? And what would the increase in price be? Because obviously, they're going to burn a little bit more fuel going down to the south landfill. But I think they could squeeze out, you know, FF and right down to that landfill uh in reasonable time, especially with the, with the bridge and how everything's set up to get down there, so.
Yeah, I'll check. I know our, I think our hauling contract at Harders specifies the transfer station, so that may have to be amended.
I thought, I thought we added language in there to allow us to go to either another landfill or somewhere else.
I remember saying that. That was one of the things that you wanted to put in there.
Yeah, it should be in there, but I just wanted to make sure that there's nothing near that is tied to a specific location.
Right. But that's, I mean, I won't comment on rates and I won't vote on a rate for this amendment, but that's something I can comment on.
What's the cost per ton for recyclables?
Right now? Today?
Sure.
Today, you're paying, you're paying us twenty two dollars a ton for recycling.
I was gonna say, this morning or this afternoon?
I, oh, we just had the discussion at our solid waste work meeting, and it's dropped um ninety dollars a ton in the last two months for paper alone. Paper markets are really bad right now. I mean, you, we have, um, our mature recycling facility down in Appleton has approximately twenty five loads of paper waiting for a market. We can't, we can't move it. We can't sell it. We can't, we can't give it away right now because pa- paper markets are that bad. Uh, and that's affecting all the pricing on recycling right now.
So what was that price a year ago then?
A year ago, our.
Twenty two a ton?
Pardon me?
Is the twenty two a ton, what was that a year ago?
Uh, we were paying out, three months ago, we were paying you.
Let's go back to that. All in favor?
I wish. Uh, we were paying out uh somewhere around sixty dollars a ton. I'd, I'd have to go back and take a look. But it, within the last year, we've been paying um, since the beginning of twenty, this is twenty two, about the beginning of twenty one, uh, we've been paying out every month for recycling. Uh, last year, it covered a substantial amount of, of uh, other costs, I'm sure, for the community. Yeah.
Harders can be a lot of pain coming up when it comes to the commodity market.
Yeah.
They're, they're dropping. That's why I said, you know, you talked about this morning or this afternoon because that's how quickly they're dropping.
I got it.
Yeah. Yeah, I looked at, at, right now, so we, we sort for two kinds of paper, cardboard and mixed paper, which is everything that's not cardboard. Uh, and mixed paper is selling for zero right now on the Chicago Board trade, and cardboard's selling for fifty five dollars a ton. A year ago, it was a hundred and ninety dollars a ton, and mixed paper was closer to ninety to a hundred dollars a ton. And it's essentially, our peak was about April of this year, and it's dropped since then. There are a lot of reasons for it, but, but nothing we have control over.
But you're paying us twenty two dollars a ton right now?
No, we are charging you twenty two dollars a ton right now.
I tried.
Yeah.
I did, but.
Any discussion? Any other more questions?
Gotta do what you gotta do.
Very, motion to approve this amendment or a motion to deny this amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Motion on the floor by trustee Snyder to approve amendment one, solid waste management service agreement. I got a second by trustee Romez. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five with one abstention. Five zero one. There you go. Thank you, sir.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think when we talk about mixed paper pricing too, uh, the fire up in Menominee is going to impact this local market as well. Because it, I think they're going to be up and running uh within a year, is the last I heard, and that was today.
Better than what is it, total loss?
We've got, the only side contract we have for paper is with packaging. We didn't want to put all our eggs in a basket. They were, they're contracted to take materials from our every.
Oh, there.
So we have some market that, everybody else, less than three months ago, we were putting in demand. And now we're, we're supplied, so it creates a role.
Yes, it is. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number ten, planning and zoning items, request by Guy Gajir for approval of a two lot certified survey map as prepared by Steve Boa.
Bida.
Bida Mau and Associates at two two nine nine Moonlight Drive parcel SU dash seven seven two dash two, located at the end of Moonlight Drive, a half mile north of Sunny Lane Zone Residential Sewer, Mr. Donks.
Yes, we are looking at about a four and a quarter acre site here. The home is currently served by sewer and water. The lot being created would be required upon development to also be served by sewer and water. Currently, laterals are not there for those services, so they will have to install those laterals along with any impact fees at the time that building permit is issued. There do, does appear to be wetlands on the property. Those are approximate based on Brown County's mapping, which was why we have a fifty foot ESA shown instead of the thirty five. They just, by not doing the wetland delineation, they allow them, they allow it, but they require an additional ESA buffer. Both lots do appear to meet requirements of our zoning code. There would be an old garage located on lot two. Um, that garage does not conform, um, is not a conforming structure because we, we require the residential dwelling to be on the site before an accessory. It is also located within the ESA. It is in very poor shape. It does not appear to be a garage door on it, and there's probably some likely damage to the existing roof. I have been told that the intent is to remove that from the site. We just recommend that some language be included so that when that lot is sold, it is sold cleaned up and we don't end up with some other zoning issues with, you know, be, after that sale. Parkland dedication fee of three hundred dollars for the one additional lot would be due at the signing of the CSM. Your planning commission motion was to recommend approval with the condition that the garage on lot two be removed and all debris cleaned up prior to the sale of lot two, the payment of the dedication fee, and then meeting um requirements of all their applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Would that be, garage be okay if it wasn't in an ESA?
It's fine to stay in the ESA.
It just has to be there after primary structure is built?
It just, well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to construct it today in its current location without doing a wetland delineation and, and then providing the proper buffers to that wetlands. They'd be in the ESA, which would have to be modified through Brown County in order to construct it. But it's, it's all dilapidated and.
It's a humane call waiting to happen.
No, that's fine. Uh, uh, the way you read it, it made it sound to me that the garage needed to be removed because it was in the ESA. That's not the, I misunderstood you.
It needs, our recommendation is to have it removed so that it is not a compliance issue moving forward. We don't want somebody to just buy that lot and store their junk in there.
Okay.
Likely have critters living in there that we don't like to pay people to go take care of and without the garage doors and whatnot. It, it looks pretty shabby right now. And, and I would just prefer not have to deal with that moving forward when it's sold and, you know, people just throw their junk all around it until they feel like building out there. And then I got neighbors calling because it's all they got is junk and, and clean it up and, I mean.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
I wouldn't have a problem if they came with a plan and want, and the board was to say, okay, if this is how you're going to fix it up, you can keep it there. But you're going to build your house, you know, within six months. That's negotiable. I don't have a problem with that. But right now, I would like to see some condition that gets it taken care of.
And that's fine. I have no problem with that. I was just curious. I wasn't sure the, I wasn't sure I understood the reason. So, reason is, is, you know what? We want to clean that up.
Yeah, I would rather see things get cleaned up right away, too.
There's no more discussion. I'll make a motion to approve a two lot certified map, survey map as prepared by Steve Bida. Bida of Mau and Associates with the following conditions, the garage on a two, lot two will be removed and all debris cleaned up prior to the sale of lot two, payment of a three hundred dollar parkland dedication fee, and meet the requirements for all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
All right, we got a motion on the floor by trustee Snyder to approve this two lot certified uh survey map with the conditions listed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Andrews. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Moving right along. Fire Department Items, Recent Grant Awards, Chief.
Thank you. Um, we worked with grant writer Ben Rogers on a few grants and were successfully awarded fifty one thousand dollars for an EMS Flex grant from the state of Wisconsin. And then, um, it's a fifty fifty share cost on the second one, uh, six thousand sixty three dollars and forty eight cents from the DNR for the forest protect, forest protection fire grant. For the EMS Flex grant, we're looking to dedicate those funds for fifteen thousand for EMS supplies. Fifteen thousand would go for additional training. And then twenty one thousand dollars would be allocated for um staff increases, and that'd be a two dollar across the board, except for a full-time and obviously myself, um, increase in the pan and call rate. And then the uh DNR grant would be, I'm going towards wildland fire protection gear, personal protective, personal protection equipment for wildland firefighting. So looking, unless there's any questions, I can, I'll get, uh, cut to the chase here, looking for approved resolution, resolution twenty two dash zero two three, authorizing the acceptance of six thousand sixty three dollars and forty eight cents in grant funding for the DNR's forest protection uh grant, and then approved resolution twenty two dash zero two four, authorizing the acceptance of fifty one thousand dollars in grant funding for the EMS Flex grant.
All right, any board just, thank you. That's uh, I, I guess my first, just my first question is,
Yep.
would we have gotten an opportunity to get these grants if it wasn't for our grant writer?
I mean, we could apply for them. I think Ben definitely adds a advantage, um, having even bought a year in, um, kind of knowing how to word these grants. So I think it's definitely proven success. Um, and then just the time that it takes to write these grants has helped out. It takes a lot of staff time and, I mean, that's what he's dedicated to doing, so I think it's definitely been a success. So I can't say whether we'd get him or not. I mean, that's kind of up in the air, but I think it's definitely helped.
Okay, great.
I'm okay with the forest fire one, but I'm, I have a lot of questions about the EMS one. Well, to start out with, with COVID, oh, during COVID, there were a lot of agencies, this one included, telling us how to live. And now we have our hands open and we want to take money from them. Um, I don't agree with this. Um, that's one reason. The second one is, this is an EMS grant. We contract with a private company for EMS, County Rescue. Are you trying to take over EMS or are we doubling services here?
No, so we run a first responder engine during the day. Um, we also have first responders that are under Swamaco fire. So we provide additional service. A lot of times, as I kind of stated in the past, County Rescue, even though they're housed in Swamaco, they have three stations, they're not always in Swamaco. So during the day, while, while we have staffing, it provides additional service. A lot of times, we can beat them to the call because they may not always be in Swamaco. So we're not looking to take over EMS. I have no interest in doing that whatsoever. You're dealing with a lot more billing issues, staffing issues, and then an ambulance, um, you know, you're looking at a million dollars for one ambulance itself with equipment. I'm not looking to go down that route anyway. It's to provide additional service to the community. And so County Rescue was awarded some of these grant funds as well, so. It just, it, this is a one-time grant. The state of Wisconsin does not offer this yearly. It's just kind of to help incentivize and um, kind of put EMS back in the forefront. A lot of EMS services suffered during COVID. A lot of people left. Um, a lot of providers kind of folded, um, because the funds weren't there. They were kind of burnt out. So the state is just providing kind of some one-time funding to kind of get those services back up and running.
Part of the problem also with the one-time funding and when you apply it to wages, it, it sticks us for the year after. It kind of screws us.
And that's why we, that's why we didn't, we kind of were, in speaking with Mr. Kaker, is we didn't want to go too high on it. Because obviously, knowing that is a one-time increase, I mean, obviously, we did discuss that we may have to cut those, obviously, wages back next year. But that's something that we're gonna have to talk with staff with.
That doesn't get pulled back.
Yeah.
I don't care what anybody says. Nobody's going to pull that back.
Yeah, I, I do think, I mean, you've got a base firefighter rate right now. Uh, we paid our, our, our new firefighters twelve dollars an hour. In trying to make that competitive to what, I mean, you can go to apply McDonald's, and I'm not saying, I know we're not comparing apples to apples, but you're paying a, a paid and called firefighter who's leaving his family, going into a fire, twelve dollars an hour, and you're paying a McDonald's worker fifteen bucks an hour, I think. I, I think we're just, what we, I'm not saying, like you said, it's, might create a pinch next year. We say, hey, look, we don't have the funds. We got to cut back on hours.
Alex gave you six thousand more for part-time wages. Alex gave you $6,000 more for part-time wages. We could swing that without the grant, without being screwed next year.
And like you said, that's something that, you know, our, my staff has to realize that we, you know, that, that funding's not going to be there in 2024.
Or maybe it is. Maybe there's another grant.
Correct.
Or maybe we, as a community, say, you know what, paying our, our on-call guys and gals $12 an hour to, and you said it right, to leave their families, go running into a fire, or go help. I, I struggle with the fact that we pay them $12 an hour.
I do. Yes, but that's not contingent. It's not...
Hold on a second.
I just wanted to make that clear. I, I've, I've always stated that I think it's shameful how little we're paying our on-call firefighters. I, I guess, I would prefer it be more of a head-up budget decision than attached to a grant. I've always found that most of the times, if it's a full-time position or even wage increases, that are attached to grant funding that's not year-over-year or has like a 10-year, that you're, you're always going to end up continuing that, but you didn't necessarily make that decision at budget time. You made it attached to a grant that's going to go away. I mean, I, I would have no problem continuing the $2 an hour next year, but I just wish it wasn't attached to a grant. Because if we can't make it happen, then it's kind of on us that we're not paying them what they're worth, which they're absolutely worth more than 12 or 15. It's crazy how little you're paying people to run into fire into some of the situations we're asking them to run into.
I agree with you there.
But I, I don't, I don't like that it's attached to a grant.
Thank you.
So, if this grant is utilized for EMS equipment and supplies, how much of it is going to be utilized for that?
We would plan, I mean, to spend most of that $15,000. I mean, like you said, knowing that these are kind of, you know, we can build our, our supply, EMS supplies, you know, and get additional equipment, get some dummies to work on, you know, practice CPR, maybe get some additional AEDs that we wouldn't be able to fund without that grant. And then the $15,000, we're looking at providing additional, we have, currently have EMRs, so we're looking, not that we're going to raise, raise our level of service, but we can provide those funds so those EMRs are, even if they're not EMS to EMTs, which is the next step up. That's what we're looking at, those funds at. And then obviously, like the 21 is kind of, we would, we would ask for a $2 raise anyways. I mean, obviously, there is some additional funds in there, but it's kind of, we can use those fundings that, you know, I think we, we're worth the $51,000. It'd be foolish not to take some of that funding from the state and apply it towards wages.
You could take $5,000 of it from the small tools you said you didn't need.
I mean, it, like, this, this enhances the...
We could still do the raise without the grant.
So how long do you have to use this money?
A year from the award date. It was awarded about two weeks ago.
I think the way, I think, I think we need to, in my opinion, need to accept this grant. And I think we need to have a discussion at a later point of how it's utilized. You know, I, I don't think we say, no, we don't take the $51,000 because I think there's opportunity to utilize that money. And if that money's going out to different communities, it's going out whether we get it or not. And if it provides an opportunity to, to get some additional equipment on our trucks that could potentially save a life, you know, I don't have any issues with that. But I, you're right, tying, tying wages to a grant, unless it was like a 10-year grant or something like that, is, is a bit concerning. I wish that we were to come at budget time with a little better understanding of, of that $12 an hour and the impact. I mean, what does that impact on an annualized basis?
So every dollar that we kind of increase, and it's, it varies obviously on the calls, but every dollar that we increase, the wage is about $9,000 to $10,000.
A year.
A year, yep.
So does the grant say anything about a, instead of doing it as a per-hour increase, a merit bonus or something like that, you can still attach it to wage, whoever's been there from the date of gets X number of dollars, and then you don't have to put it to an hourly increase for now. We can address that come next budget cycle, and then that way, we don't have to work, it's not necessarily we're on the hook to keep that $2 going.
So, I mean, there's a lot of questions. Obviously, nothing's really clear sometimes when they award grants. I know I did show Jessica one of the, because she had asked about that as well. It's to kind of incentivize so people don't leave the EMS field or the fire field to kind of, like you said, to, for McDonald's, you know, it's a bad example, but for McDonald's where they can make more money. And that's kind of why we...
My understanding in the reading of it is it's for staffing retention strategy so that it's pretty loose.
Retention bonus sounds good.
That's what I'm saying. So I feel like we could come back to the next village board meeting with some options.
If you can get it that way, then I think it would ease a little bit more...
I think that's a really good idea because then you can, you can very clearly state that, that this, because you got this grant, you know, we really appreciate your service to the village. We really want you to be around. Here's, because we got the, because we got this grant, here's this retention bonus, instead of saying it's a $2 wage increase. And then next year, come to budget time, and we determine we can't swing it. And then we're like, oh, yeah, we appreciate this.
Then we're the bad guys.
But we're going to be decreasing your wages now. I, I think it, I think it's one of the things that could really backfire to...
Because if it's, if it's written so vaguely, I say we take advantage of that. And that way, the firefighters get their just rewards for doing a great job for us. We can explore upping from that $12 next budget cycle. We can still utilize the rest of the $51,000 for other things that you have earmarked. Everybody's happy, I think.
No. No.
What, what's, what's wrong with it then? What's wrong with it?
I still think you're doubling services. Still think you're trying to take over EMS, Wisconsin Department of Health, and, no, no.
Well, I, I support taking the $51,000 grant with, along with how we just discussed here briefly with, instead of tied to the hourly wage, we look at...
Retention bonus.
Retention bonuses, merits, whatever, whatever we can do to get it done that way, along with some equipment if it needs to be tied to, you know, within the stipulations of the, the grant.
Would you prefer that Chief take that $21,000 and come up with that one-time merit?
Absolutely.
Example? Or do you want him to come back to another village board meeting and lay out options for you? What would you prefer?
I, I don't think, I mean, that's, again, just my opinion, you know, he's a director or, and he's our chief. I think he should be able to come up with some sort of game plan with, with the direction that this is a merit, not an hour.
A one-time...
Right. I mean, there's all sorts of ways to, to figure that out. I think you can figure it out just fine, you know, based on years of service, based on this, based on that, you get X amount.
Number of calls you did or something.
Absolutely, yeah. So I, I think you can do that. And I think the other thing is utilizing the other dollars to make sure that we have the lifesaving equipment on all of our vehicles that go out on a call to make sure that every one of them's equipped with, with what it, what we need for emergency lifesaving equipment, you know? If we don't have defibrillators on every, on every piece of equipment that we have, we should. That's just my, my thought. All right, so let's take, let's tackle the first one first. Resolution 22023 authorizing the acceptance of $6,063.48 in a grant funding from the DNR forest fire protection grant. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, I got a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 22023 authorizing the exception, acceptance of $6,063.48 in the grant funding for the DNR forest protection grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Ward. All, is that roll call? No.
It, it does have a monetary value with the 50-cost share, so I can do a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Rodden?
Aye.
Trustee Romez?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for Resolution 220, or a dissolution of 22024 authorizing the acceptance of $51,000 in grant funding for the EMS Flex grant?
So moved with the noted additions of how to utilize a retention bonus versus salary.
All right, so I got a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 22024 authorizing the acceptance of $51,000 in grant funding for the EMS Flex grant with the following, I guess, conditions would be, one, what, go ahead.
Chief, if you've got any clarifying questions?
I, I guess so. What you're, what you're asking for is to put a, I guess, a one-time bonus? Is that what you're looking for? I, I'm getting some...
Retention bonus, yes.
Okay.
Or you can pay it out however you want. You know, that would be kind of a discretion, but not an hourly wage increase.
Okay.
That would, you know, go off into perpetuity.
Okay. I, I, I mean, just for clarity, I mean, even like next year, so if you gave a $2 raise increase, right, obviously, we have to live within that means of the budget anyway. So I, I'm not saying, I, I guess what you're saying is you don't want the $2 increase, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So it's, it's a...
I mean, we have to live within the budget. I mean, just, I mean, I know you budgeted a certain dollar amount for wages. We have to live as a department in that budget. It's not like we're going...
So next budget cycle, you can put that $2 in under your budget, and then we can discuss it and digest it.
So, so remember your proposed 2023 budget has $168,000 for part-time wages, correct?
Correct.
So if you wanted $21,000, this is a supplementary grant, so you can go up to 189, and you've got to figure out that extra $21,000. How would, how do you want to do a retention bonus with that $21,000? So you still have the $168,000 to work with and $21,000 for a one-time usage. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yep, yeah.
Right. So again, I got a motion on the floor by Trustee Schneider to approve Resolution 22024 authorizing the acceptance of $51,000 in grant funding for the EMS Flex grant with the following condition, that $21,000 of those funds is utilized for a one-time monetary retention gift to our firefighting staff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Ward. Roll call.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Nay.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Rodden?
Aye.
Trustee Romez?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
Motion carries five to one.
Very good. Thank you for getting through that. All right. Item number 12, Finance Items, Village Audit Services for Year 2022 through 2026.
Thank you.
There you go. Go ahead.
Keeping it moving. So on August 15th, the Village Board directed staff to issue a request for proposals for contracted audit and non-audit services. The RFP was issued the following day and closed on September 9th. We did receive three qualified proposals, and staff evaluated the proposals and invited all three firms to interview. The three-person review team, each, each of us on that team independently scored the proposals and then met to discuss the recommendations. According to the Government Finance Officers Association, cost should not be the primary factor in selecting an audit firm, though obviously cost does matter. So we did use a scorecard where 40% of the weight was given to the fees, 35% to the RFP requirements, and then the remaining percent to company information and adherence to RFP instructions. All three firms were well-qualified. The average total score across the review teams was 4.53 for Clifton Larson Allen, 4.13 for Kerber Rose, and 3.66 for Hawkins Ash. Beyond the scoring that I just noted, we did recommend that Clifton Larson Allen be selected as our contracted provider for audit and non-audit services for audit years 2022 through 2026. And I noted some of the reasons that our review team gave for that recommendation. That includes their size, location, staff knowledge, their extensive experience working with local governments, as well as their competitive audit pricing. They also had a well-written proposal, and their interview performance was top-notch.
Just for clarification, DNP does, does not provide?
Did not provide.
And did I hear you correctly? You said Hawkins Ash had a scoring of 4.66.
3.1.
Hawkins Ash was 3, 3.66.
3.66, okay. Thank you. That explains a lot. I was wondering how they...
So I greatly appreciate the way you handled this and going through because at the end of the day, it's not about the lowest price provider. I think too many governmental agencies get caught up on that. I think it's who best fits. In this particular case, who best fits our village and, and the needs that we have in our village. So thank you for utilizing this process to come up with your decision.
And they're almost that price anyway, so, and you feel comfortable with them. So it makes sense.
I do have one question. So when I, I look at the price, right, so we look at the base price of $130,500 versus $127,000. Yeah, I agree, they're basically the same. Now go down to the bottom where it says base plus additional services total. That's where you see a really significant spread. Can you elaborate, can you explain that, where, where we're seeing that spread? Am I really seeing a potential of a $70,000 difference between these two firms?
Yes. So we listed in the RFP language any potential services, service that we might need to contract with an auditor for. So most of these, for example, the ARP, the single audit, we have not been subject to a single audit at the village that, that I'm aware of. And even though we will be subject to this ARP single audit, that will probably be the only time that we have a single audit requirement. The TID expenditure period audit, that's going to happen once per TID, and we have three TIDs. Tomorrow, I'm actually meeting with the auditors on the TID two expenditure period audit, so that one is being taken care of now. TID closure audit, we're only going to have once for each of those three TIDs. So those are, those are irregular things. I don't expect that we're going to have all of those in any year. And, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect to see all those expenses. So the differential shouldn't have as much weight, in my opinion.
Okay. We do see a little bit of separation develop, though. When we look at the TID expenditure period audit and then et cetera, that's $1,000 every year times three, so $3,000 a year. So it just starts to go, that's why I was curious. So you, from what I'm hearing you say, is that the base number that they give us is pretty much what you expect to pay them, with the exception of the $3,000 a year for the TID expenditure audit or period audit. Is that fair?
The expenses that we typically have in a year would be those listed in the base quote, the Form C and the PSC report. Those are the expenses that we typically have each year. And the quote that was provided by CLA for 2022 for those services is equal to what we actually paid for 2021 audit services. So they actually did no increase.
And Kerber Rose is actually non-responsive?
They did not give us a separate price for those two reports.
Is that in their base, then?
That's a question that we had when we were reviewing the proposals.
What, what did they say?
Um...
Do you remember?
They, they didn't address it in their, so everybody was given a chart to provide their pricing, and they didn't address it at all. And then it wasn't something that was answered in the interviews as well. We had a standard set of questions that we asked to each of the firms. And so we did not get an answer to them as to why they did not provide separate pricing for those two.
Okay.
Amounts, yeah.
I appreciate that additional detail. Do I have a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a, was there a comment?
No, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal submitted by Clifton Larson and Allen LLP to provide audit and non-audit services to the village of Swamaco for audit years 2022 through 2026.
All right, I got a motion on the floor to approve the proposal submitted by Clifton Larson Allen LLP to provide audit and non-audit services to the village of Swamaco for audit years 2022 through 2026. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Andrews. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six-zero. Opposed, motion carries six-zero. All right. Discussing on any future agenda items.
With nothing, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sky, do you have anything? Okay. I got a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Andrews. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're out of here.
Sky, I got one question. Where did you find a train?
Yeah.
And, and was it a steam?
And was it actually running at all?
Where'd you find a train?
What, what trains?
Yeah, was it Amtrak?